But we'll work through it. I think we'll be all right. For the board members, make sure you pull your microphones forward and speak so that we can make sure everybody can hear you and utilize your computers as best you can, all right? I'd like to call the December 11th, 2023 meeting of the Town and Disc unit, Planning Board, and Zoning Commission to order. Mr. Henry, would you please call the roll? Is Mr. Henry calling the roll? Looks like he's locked up or something there. Is it working? The audio might not work. Is he able to speak? We don't have it. Mr. Henry, raise your hand if you can hear me okay?
It looks like this is on mute. Should we take that off mute? Would that help?
Laura, can you hear us?
Yeah, now we can hear you.
There we go. Okay, okay. We start the meeting. Mr. Henry, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Laflamme.
Here.
Mr. Scrubby Tennis.
Here.
Mr. Carr.
Here.
Mr. McPartland.
Here.
Mr. Verapino.
Here.
Ms. Gold.
Present.
I believe Ms. Strang is excused in absent.
Correct.
Mr. Desher.
Here.
Cameron Walsh.
Here. Thank you, Mr. Henry. All right, we're on a roll here. Approval, approval of the... Here.
Oh, sorry, I was trying to get rid of the echo. Could you guys hear an echo when Clark...
We don't have an echo in the meeting room, no. Do not.
Jen has to come back out and unmute us.
Oh. Unmuted.
Or one of you guys can use that...
John, is there a way to get audio out through the HDMI?
I muted it, Jen, because it was a terrible echo.
I'm not sure what's causing that. It might be the speakers in the room that sent their microphone again.
Okay.
Can you change your inputs?
Uh, there's the only input is the computer's microphone. There's no, there's nothing else hooked up to it unfortunately.
Maybe we turn that microphone off temporarily up there. Maybe there's some feedback. If it does turn off.
This one's actually not.
Can you say something with me, maybe?
Uh, okay, can you hear? I still hear the echo.
Is, is audio, audio out is coming to the laptop. Is there a way to go through the HDMI?
Continue mode?
Uh, yeah, companion mode is, uh, do you want me to mute companion mode? I'm pretty sure it's only showing video right now.
Then that'll mute the livestream.
Okay. I'm sorry, what was your, what was your remote standing?
Do these speakers, are they plugged into the HDMI as well?
No. Sorry.
Are we okay? Laura, I can't, uh...
Because normally people on the, on the livestream come through the speakers.
Yeah, it's from my understanding, the livestream is hosted on a computer below you.
That's okay.
Oh, and my computer is there. Okay. Such a, such a mess.
Yeah, there's some...
Okay, now it makes sense. Okay.
So I changed some people to be on the top.
I'm sorry.
You're probably gonna have to...
I can turn the speakers in the room.
Let me try that thing. Hold on. I'm gonna show you. I think it was a different person.
If it's one of the people that's...
Is it like a, is it a auxiliary cable that we could run to the laptop instead?
Not necessarily. I mean, the most I can do is I can put that microphone next to it so everyone can, in the room can hear it. But I'm worried that the speakers in the room is actually what's causing her from that. Because if it's, if she's talking and it's coming over the speakers, actually it's not coming over the speakers for her.
She, she's hearing the echo.
Yeah.
They're hearing it. It could be because of those speakers. I think maybe Laura and Clark might have to live with the echo.
Yeah, yeah. Laura, how bad's the echo? Can we get through it?
Laura isn't hearing it.
Or Clark? Do you know how bad the echo is? Is it, is it possible to hear us? We are recording with the digital recorder.
I can hear you without an echo.
Maybe Laura was the problem.
Yeah.
But I do hear an echo from my...
And that's, that's because there's audio coming from two participants in the meeting.
I believe so, yeah.
In this room, right?
Yes, there should be. It's actually, it should, it should be video from the town and disc unit on the bottom, the center. But the audio should just be coming from the computer's microphone.
If Laura was the mute herself when Clark talked, and Clark muted himself when Laura talked, you think that would do it?
I mean, maybe, I actually, I'm not too certain whether she was on there right now. If I was there, maybe I could pass through stuff and figure it out, but my best educated guess is it's either the speakers in this room or they might be watching the livestream, the livestream might be echoing, or the media itself may just be playing.
Yeah, if they have their phones with the livestream on, it could be getting, you know, so I might want to mention that to Laura. Or TVs or whatever. Thank you, everybody, for your patience. I appreciate it.
Uh, is it still an echo?
Uh, testing. One, two, three. We're, no, we're okay here in the meeting room.
Okay.
Everybody's good? Good, ready to proceed?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're at the approval of the minutes, the minutes from the November 27th, 2023 meeting. Can I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. McPartland for approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Khan. Corrections and changes. I have one minor comment that I think we can do a friendly amendment on, and that's under, I mean, basically, and are those present? Mr. Hess was dropped off or neglected to be at it, so we have to add Mr. Hess, who sat in as our attorney for that night, under also present. That's the only comment that I have. Does anybody else have any changes or comments to the minutes? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of approval of the minutes from November 27th, 2023, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
I'll abstain. Mr. Chairman, I was absent.
Okay, Mr. Scrubby Tennis is abstaining, and we'll approve the minutes with that one minor addition to add Mr. Hess to also present. Thank you, everybody. We have no public hearings tonight, so move right to privilege of the floor. Anyone wishing to be heard regarding any planning and zoning matters in the town in this unit, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. We'll listen to what you have to say, so privilege of the floor is open. Anybody here in the meeting room would like to speak? Okay, seeing no one here. Laura, do you have any communications? Do we have anybody online for the privilege of the floor?
I don't have any communica... I believe, um, I didn't see an applicant.
Laura, you broke up right at the end. The applicant that wants to speak during privilege of the floor, you said?
No one.
No one, okay. All right. Hearing, seeing no one here, or virtually, we'll close privilege of the floor. We have no unfinished business, so we have a couple items on our new business tonight. First item on our new business is Resolution 2023-30, a resolution for site plan approval for renovations to replace the existing front side roof fascias, facades at 25, excuse me, 3514 State Street, and that's Mohawk Army Navy. Resolution has been posted. Now, just summarize, resolved that the Planning Board and Zoning Commission finds the above referenced site plan meets the requirements of the zoning code and therefore hereby approves this site plan. To have a motion to approve 3514 State Street, Mohawk Army Navy. So moved. Moved by Mr. Laflamme for approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
The second by Ms. Gold. Any discussion? Pretty straightforward. We reviewed the rendering, so proven, look, proven's look good, so I think that's pretty much it. No other comments? Okay, Mr. Henry, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Laflamme.
Aye.
Mr. Scrubby Tennis.
Aye.
Mr. Carr.
Aye.
Mr. McPartland.
Aye.
Mr. Verapino.
Aye.
Ms. Gold.
Aye.
Cameron Walsh.
Aye, the resolution's approved. Do, do we have Representative of Mohawk Army Navy online tonight?
He actually is.
Okay, just wanted to say thank you. I think you're all set, and you can talk to Laura about a building permit or whatever you need to go forward, okay?
Thank you very much.
Any questions or comments? No? No, okay. Thank you. All right, have a good night. All right, next resolution?
You should.
Okay. That little delay, that gets you going, doesn't it? Resolution 2020, next resolution, Resolution 2023-31, resolution for approval of a lot line adjustment at 2660 Rosendale Road slash 225, 225 Agostino Ave. And that resolution reads, or at least the resolve, the Planning Board and Zoning Commission does hereby grant final lot line adjustment approval for 2660 Rosendale Road and 22, 225 Agostino Ave, as shown on the aforementioned one page, survey drawing with the following conditions. One, prior to recording the plat, the final lot line adjustment map shall be sent to the planning department for the review and approval. Any changes, additions, or deletions requested shall be addressed to the satisfaction of the planning department before printing the MyLars. Do I have a motion for approval for this lot line adjustment?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, moved for approval by Mr. Scrubby Tennis. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And second by Mr. McPartland. Discussion? Okay, hearing no discussion, I mean, it's pretty straightforward again. There was no issues. It's not, uh, yeah, there was no issues, and there was no area variances required as a result of the lot line adjustment, so something between neighbors, and we're good with that. All right, any other comments? No? Please call the roll. Mr. Henry?
Mr. Laflamme.
Aye.
Mr. Scrubby Tennis.
Aye.
Mr. Carr.
Aye.
Mr. McPartland.
Aye.
Mr. Verapino.
Aye.
Ms. Gold.
Aye.
Cameron Walsh.
Aye, the resolution's approved. I don't know if it stopped or if it just goes into asleep mode so you can't see it. There's a record button here. Okay, just checking sure the recorder was going. It looks like the, the screen shuts down when it's sitting. All right, so that's it for new business. Thank you. If anybody's online for 2660 to 225 Agostino, thank you, and bring, you can bring your map into the office for review, and I'll make sure to get it right, okay? And thank you. Okay, we have discussion. We have a few items on our discussion tonight, first up being 2890 River Road. This is site, site plan application for a three lot minor subdivision. We have the applicants here and their engineer. I know we, we don't have any action tonight. I know that, just for public information, we know that there were several documents that came in late on Friday. They were forwarded to the board on Saturday, so everybody may not have had an opportunity to take a look at those, as you can understand. They weren't included in the, in the agenda packet, so the public doesn't have those. But they are, just for public information, they will be included in the packet. So the next meeting we have in January, which is January 8th, all that information will be available for the public at that point in time. So, Mr. Roman, but you can, you can tell us what we got and give us an update on where you stand.
Yeah, just an update. Um, you know, we submitted the 100-year storm that was in that packet.
Is that microphone on? Just make sure.
It's not, it's not. It's not gonna work.
It's not gonna work because of, all right, you may need to speak up. Nope, it's not gonna work.
So Mike DeSofa, Engineering Ventures, did a 100-year storm that was requested by the Conservation Advisory Council, so they can take a look at that. Just to kind of know really from our analysis opinion, there's no conflict with it. The basement levels are one foot above that 100-year mark, so really, there's no issues or concerns that, that Doug, the town reviewer, once he does his review, will be able to hopefully sign off on that. So that was kind of just one of the last components that was provided to the town. Just want to point that out. I know we had the, I wasn't able to attend, but the CAC advisory meeting, and it was unfortunate. I was hoping that they were gonna give a recommendation for Seeker. They were not able to, so I just want to make sure in the next meeting, if they have any questions or if we need to have a separate meeting or have Doug there, I just want to, that's an important meeting that they fully understand, you know, everything about the project. So if I need to, I can meet with them individually, because we love to get the recommendation for Seeker so that we can come into our next meeting, a planning board meeting, with that. That's very important for us. I know we have a couple meetings that are in front of us still. Before you know it, we'll be needing to submit for a building permits, and that takes some time, and really want to take advantage of the construction season for the house. Love to start in April, so when you look at it in that sense, there's not a lot of time. So really, it's important that if they have any questions, whether it's on my team or with the town reviewer, that we can kind of make sure they understand everything that was submitted to them at the time. The other thing I want to consider too is, and I know it's not typical that town does this, is with Seeker, is a demo permit for the house. Reason why we're asking that is, is that it's in our opinion that if the house is taken down now, it really doesn't change the density of this lot in any way. If for some reason this application doesn't go through, the house still needs to come down to allow for the one house to be built on the backside of Sonica. This would help us tremendously to move the project along. It's a good opportunity that we have right now financially lined up to get the house taken down. So again, kind of wanted to have that discussed amongst the board tonight, just to see if that's an option we can consider moving forward. Other than that, we'll be prepared to come back in for the next meeting in January.
Yeah, this board has no say regarding the issuance of the, of the building permit. That's strictly the building department. Either building inspectors or code enforcement agents, and Attorney can correct me if I'm wrong, but that's pretty much building department. So we have to, have to request that through Laura.
The town doesn't issue permits until there's planning board approval. So that request will be accommodated.
I couldn't hear, until what?
She said until a planning board approval.
Yeah, so at which, to be clear, Laura, at which point of approval are we talking about here? Final site plan?
Final subdivision.
Final subdivision.
But how do the buildings on the whole town get their approval for demolition then?
There's no pending question with the town on that proposal.
Because it's back in court. Okay.
So having sketch plan approval doesn't, is not an option?
It's not an option.
Just trying to move this along. We've had a couple hiccups along the way timing wise, so I just, again, I can't emphasize this is a house for my sister and for Ryan. It's not a development project. We're really trying to move this along as quick as possible. So if there's opportunity to look at some things that it's not typical, something I was hoping that we can request.
Yeah, I mean, basically, you know, this board is powerless on that, so
Okay.
you, if you need to, like, you can make an appointment, you know, with the town attorney and Laura and sit down and see if you can, if there's any way that you can expedite that, but it would be their decision, okay?
So, so our next milestone would be subdivision approval?
The next milestone would be for the Conservation Advisory Council to issue their declaration, negative or positive, and then we would have a resolution, that's my recommendation to us, stating Seeker, granting Seeker, whatever it may be, and then calling for a public hearing on the subdivision. So I think the next CAC meeting is, looks January 24th to 3rd.
Yeah.
It's my understanding. So if they were to take action on the 3rd, we have a meeting on, our next meeting would be the 8th, so we could call for a resolution, making our Seeker declaration and calling for a public hearing. And that would be the second meeting, would be the resolution in January, so that would probably mean the first opportunity for the public hearing would be the first meeting in February.
Okay, the 12th.
I mean, that's just the way it kind of falls out.
Okay.
All right. Just so I understand the timeline there, are we saying then that we don't have enough turnaround time from when the CAC provides a recommendation on January 4th to the first meeting in January to make our secret determination?
Well, we have to call for a resolution, making that determination, so we won't have a resolution unless we, you know, have a tentative resolution on the 8th. It's the only way we could do that.
Well, I mean, this is one of the issues that I have with fast-tracking some of the engineering for a minor subdivision. We, I feel like are much further along than we really need to be for sketch plan and calling for a public hearing. Matter of fact, we've, we've already heard from the public on this. I, I question what new information we will gather from the public hearing, but, but this is really just delaying that, and, and I don't, you know, I, I have questions I could ask about the revised site plan and the, the response to a TDE letter, but it almost feels like it's, it's not really worth considering those finer points until we can make a secret determination and kind of move this to the next stage. You know, my, my questions are about, you know, detail items on the, the site plan, you know, the, the, the section view detail for the grass swale and the bio retention area. I'd like to know what the sizing at it, if the sizing of the, the HDPE that runs from ST5 to ST6 is adequate. You know, do we have enough drainage layer above perforated PVC in the bottom of the bio retention basins? You know, these aren't, these aren't items that we discuss when we're granting sketch plan approval or moving through preliminary approvals. And so I, I just want to put it out there that the planning board has invested a lot of time in this, and the CAC not acting last week is, is really the only thing holding us up now.
Um, the CAC did not have the updated plans.
But those updated plans just result in a reduced density.
Ask them to take, I don't know, the plans that you guys are requesting.
Those plans were submitted a long time ago. I don't understand. The only thing we recently submitted, just to be clear, was the 100-year storm.
Well, what I'm trying to say is, you know, as we, as we continue to work with this applicant, and I want to thank the applicant for, you know, continuing to move this forward and take our feedback and make plan revisions and, and continue to spend money on engineering, as this applicant continues to do that and we give them direction on requested changes, it's incumbent upon us as a, as a party to this planning process to do our part to move the project forward. And there were no substantive revisions to the site plan that in my mind really, really change whether or not we, we have an environmental impact here. We're talking about a reduction in density. We're talking about adding bio retention basins, which are private stormwater treatment practices to ensure that there's no additional resulting drainage issues from the proposed development. It's all, it's all moving in a positive direction, and so, you know, for that reason, I, I would like to call for a tentative resolution in our first meeting in January, and if we don't have a recommendation from the CAC, if they still want to, you know, hem and haul over the SWIP, then so be it, but at least we have our ducks in a row. I feel as though we're at that point.
Mr. Khan, do you have any comments?
I can let Laura speak more to that because it's hard to be remote tonight, but I think that the planning board should do, that the boards that are giving them input are giving them input on the most updated.
Which they will do in January.
I think since we're wanting to, the way that the meeting schedule lines up, the CAC meets January 3rd, the planning board meets January 4th. So a tentative resolution if that planning board actually can generate, is probably still okay, but at the board's discretion.
Yep. Okay, as long, I, I, so where I'm parked in this is, I would like to see, given that we've gotten to the point where we're at here, as expedited as possible, within the bounds of, you know, our past precedents and not setting any new ones. So if the CAC...
The drapes.
If the, if the CAC, um, sorry, we have, we have a wildlife issue in the room.
We have a cat playing peekaboo from the drapes.
Okay, all right, I'm gonna keep going. If the CAC is able to issue their Seeker determination before our meeting, and I think having a tentative resolution for our meeting, and if we need to pull it and table it, we can do that. And a tentative resolution would be for calling for a public hearing.
Issuing a Seeker determination and calling for a public...
Right.
And we've done that before.
Yep.
I think we just did it recently, so.
So I think that's a good...
All right. All right, so we have a recommendation on the floor that we call for a tentative resolution for the next meeting, which is January 8th, issuing our Seeker declaration and calling for a public hearing, and it would be a tentative resolution based on receiving the input through referral from the Conservation Advisory Council. All those in favor of having that tentative resolution next meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay.
And, and just one, I think we'll be able, in our packet for the January 8th meeting, to be able to see what the CSE recommended, right? Because I think there's enough time.
Yes.
Okay. Laura, does that sound reasonable to you and Park?
Yeah, that sounds good. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, as far as the other, I mean, there was other information, I can't remember, was, you know, archaeological and wildlife.
Yeah, that, that's all been processed already up to this point, and there's been no issues with either of those.
The bat thing was, I mean, it was, you've got to be careful at the time of the year, and that was about it, I think, right?
Yeah, I'll follow that point real quick, just because he's the one that kind of took the lead on that, but that's all been done.
Yeah, so you know, as you know, we have wetlands on site, Army Corps wetlands, so we submitted a joint perm application to the DUC and the Army Corps. What are the requests they had for us is to study the northern long-eared bat, which is an endangered species for habitat on the property. So we had the study completed. The results were that there was no habitat for the bat, the bat on the property. That's been submitted back to the, the DUC and the Army Corps, and we're just awaiting some feedback from them on that. As far as archaeology, that was flagged on the EAF as a concern for historic properties. So we contacted SHPO through the Chris system, their online consultation portal, and they asked us to wait phase one study, so a phase one A and phase one B. So phase one A is desktop analysis, phase one B is actual fieldwork, looking for some evidence of a historical nature of the property. That came back, that study was completed. The results came back as no adverse impacts to historical sites on the property, no evidence of historical sites. That was submitted back to SHPO through the Chris system, and they agreed with the findings and issued a negative, or no adverse, no adverse impact letter back to us, and that's all taken care of.
Okay. Would you have anything? Mr. McPartland, Mr. Khan? Anything? What I'd like to add is I did watch the Conservation Advisory Council meeting the other night, and I think there was one discussion, and this is something we can follow up on, not to answer tonight, but it was, you know, the easement versus conveying the property to the town. You know, that's something I think that's still an open item, whether it's an easement, the strip of land, it'd be 80-foot right away, so on and so forth, versus conveyance. So that's just something we just have to, to work through, and I think that's independent. I mean, I think, I believe either conveyance or an easement would allow the town to do what they need to do, so it's really between the applicant and the town, you know, the pros and cons for each of yous, you know, on how that happens and whatever the recommendation is there, okay?
Makes sense.
All right, but thank you for coming in tonight. We appreciate your patience.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Thank you.
And I think we made some headway tonight.
Yep.
Okay?
All right, thank you.
Good, thank you.
Before we move on, does anybody know why the cat's here?
Is there, it's actually inside the room?
It's playing behind the drapes.
It's a cat.
Could it be? Sure, it is.
I don't know. I just know I'm allergic, and that's what was my first clue. I thought it was one, and then I saw him or her staring out at me.
We hope, we hope it's a cat, right?
Yes.
They're right next to it. Is it?
Yeah.
Is it a kitten or?
No, it's a full-coated bat. All right.
An exciting meeting tonight, huh?
It should, he's stuck here overnight.
If it's heading out?
If it stays behind there, is that okay, Ms. Gold, if it's far enough away from you? Or we can continue?
It's over here. Oh, wait, yeah. Is that where it should?
He's a little spooky.
This isn't the first.
I know, but if, if you're okay, we just leave it there for the, so we complete the meeting right now?
Elena went to get someone.
It needs to care overnight.
Yeah, well, we'll take care of it after the meeting. We have a planning department official here who'll put on cat duty.
Are you, you're okay, Ms. Gold?
I'm okay.
All right, for now.
With my luck, it'll probably come rub on my leg next.
No, hopefully someone will be able to come.
It's a little hurt.
Okay, well, let's move forward and we'll worry about that. for addition to the existing building expansion of the parking lot. And we have Mr. Paleshi, engineer of the applicant here, who's tonight.
And I gather there's been some communication between you and the TDE?
Yes.
And you revised the plan a little bit, the submission rather, not the plan, but the submission, and we haven't heard back yet from the TDE because there hasn't been enough time.
Correct.
Yep.
So yeah, so I'll give the board an update tonight, basically. You know, we were before this board back in November to propose a 2,700 square foot addition at 1430 Balltown Road, as well as parking lot modifications at the rear of the site. We went to the CAC meeting, as you had mentioned, this past Wednesday, and we had some discussion with the CAC. Couple of concerns they had were the couple of trees that we proposed at the driveway entrance. We had proposed red maples, and they requested white oaks. So that is one of the changes that we've made and already submitted, and that's what you see up on the screen here. The other change that they had requested was the sidewalk from Balltown Road, and at the meeting, we agreed to installing the sidewalk there, as Laura's pointing out. But when I was reviewing the plan today, I didn't realize there was already a sidewalk on the left side of that driveway. So, you know, we were hoping that instead of adding additional sidewalk on that side, if we could keep the existing sidewalk and then have a, you know, we can strike across for a crosswalk at the main driveway entrance, and then we'll certainly add another one right in front of that main entry doorway. So that will be sort of a change or discussion that we can have, you know, with this board and with Laura. But some of the bigger changes that we've made since the, since we were before this planning board was, if you recall, we had an underground detention basin for the parking lot in the back, and that detention basin was designed for the 25-year storm event. And after reviewing some of the TDE comments, they requested that 100-year storm event would be looked at, even though we're proposing disturbance less than one acre, town and NISCUUNA law has been that you design up to the 25-year storm. So that's kind of where we came up with the first go-around. But in order to accommodate the 100-year, we were able to get rid of the underground detention and propose a at-grade stormwater detention basin at the front of the addition. We were able to keep that in a small footprint, even though we're going to detain up to the 100-year storm event, and we're proposing landscaping in front of that detention basin. And the detention basin is simply to hold the volume of water and slow down the water going out to Balltown Road. So it'll be a grass detention basin, it can be mowed, and like I was saying, we're proposing some landscaping. And actually Laura's got the rendering up here, where one of the things the CAC had mentioned was trying to soften up the front yard from Balltown Road. So with that detention basin in the front, you wouldn't even notice that it's there, it's a little hump in the grass area up front, but well landscaped, as shown in this picture or close to that picture. These renderings are always great, but it'll look better than, than the picture. So yeah, so those are some of the changes that we did make. Other things such as lighting, if you recall, the first go-around with our lighting proposal, we had several light heads, and when looking at it again, working with a lighting consultant, we reduced the number of light poles from, I believe, four or five to two light poles with double heads. So reducing the amount of light heads for the parking lot, but still maintaining, obviously, the security for in and out, for use of that. They are LED down type lighting, and that was another thing we talked about with CAC, making sure that, you know, it wouldn't illuminate the sky, so proposing a down type LED was acceptable to them. What else did we talk about? With the parking lot revisions that we've made, I think the first go-around again removed a few additional mature trees. So now I believe we're down to 58 parking spaces with the latest plan, and what that did was saved a couple extra, a couple of the mature trees that are currently out there. So this plan really minimizes the disturbance areas and, you know, maintaining the mature trees on site. Working with the planning board and the CAC, and the TDE for that matter, we hope that, you know, we can move this along to the next planning board meeting, you know, and get this approved, because there is a tight timeline here. I think at the first meeting, we explained to you that this was for the NISCUUNA district offices, and the owner of the property has a timeline, and they have to get them in by June of 2024. So that, you know, we can get all our ducks in a row for January, you know, there's a chance that maybe February they can get under construction and meet the timeline, the deadline that's needed for June, so. I think that's it. If there's any questions, obviously I'm here to answer any questions that the board may have tonight.
Anything, Ms. Gold?
Well, I'm still looking for the TDE report. I don't know if the change in parkage changes the drainage significantly or not. I think probably not.
Probably not, yeah, it does not, right. Yeah, the, the information we provided to the, to the town on December 1st had the updated stormwater analysis, where the stormwater is in the front and attenuating the 100-year. So we'll look for the TDE comments addressing that. I did have a chance to review the prior comments, and it kind of gave us an idea with, you know, the revisions that we've already made that address a lot of the, you know, comments from the first go-around. So I would expect sort of the same round of comments where they should be easy enough to answer and resubmit back to the town in a timely fashion so that we can, you know, try to keep things moving forward.
Well, there, for the detention pond with the 100-year storm, do we expect to actually have a predicted elevation of water in there? Do you know how much water, estimate it would be in there? How deep it would be, I guess is where?
Yeah, the grade, let me pull up the grading plan here.
I think because of New York State Building Code, isn't there like a requirement, I think two feet, you need to have it fenced or something along those lines?
Yeah, so top of berm, and that's, again, the very top of berm where the landscaping would be, is 441, and the bottom elevation of the practice is 438. So you're looking at three feet, but that's not, we're not peaking all the way up to the 441 elevation. And, you know, when you get that flash flood, there will be temporary ponding within that practice because there's a small pipe slowly releasing the water out of there, but within a matter of, you know, let's say, a day, that water would be released out of there and it'll become dry. I can understand sometimes if that was a wet practice and there'd be ponding water, like permanently, then you may want to consider a fence, but this will not be designed that way, and I don't think we need a fence.
Yeah, just, whatever the rules, right, it's New York State Building Code, if you're saying that water is not going to reach an elevation where a fence is required, that's the engineering, right? Especially, especially with the 100-year storm, which we hope doesn't happen, right?
Right, yep.
All right, but if we know there's going to be water in there, obviously we have to think safety, right, so.
Right.
All right, and you went to the Conservation Advisory Council, obviously, I guess it was the other, last week, right?
Wednesday.
And you, they recommended a negative declaration.
They did, yes.
So we're a little bit further along here. So I'm trying to recall if a public hearing is a requirement, Laura, or not? I think we typically do. If it is a re-
For tenet changes, it's not required, not the board.
It's not required?
It's not, for site plan, no.
And I don't see-
You guys don't normally do them, and what are you guys usually for?
Yeah, the only reason I ask is because it's more than just a tenant change, there's an addition, 27% change in addition, that's, you know, that sort of is a little bit different than a tenant change with no addition put on, you know? So it's really up to the board, and we haven't received any comments. We have, I received one comment, it was, I guess, was concerned about traffic, obviously you did the traffic numbers, and it's an increase of four in the AM and an increase in four in the PM, which is reasonable, you know? Obviously, nobody wants increases, but it's, let's face it, it's not that much over what's there now, at least by the textbook, right? So I don't have a problem not having a public hearing, I'll just, I'll leave it to the board and the recommendation, Ms. Gold.
And I don't have an issue unless the TD comes back and that we're creating a significant runoff problem. I don't think that's likely, but I'm not an engineer, so I'm not going to evaluate it.
All right, do we need to have a resolution issuing seeker, or can we wait till we issue it and do that all at once at final approval, Laura?
For site plan, if you, only final approval.
Okay, so, all right, so.
I have some questions.
Yep, go ahead, Dave.
A couple of questions. So parking, is there, is there a need, I guess, staff-wise and then visitor-wise, whether there's going to be seminars or meetings or something there, to have the amount of parking spaces that are currently shown?
Yes, there is.
They need that amount?
They do need it, and also, but if you look at the parking requirement for the town, I think we're only in excess of four on the plan you saw, but this current plan reduced another couple parking spaces to save a tree, and the dumpster is kind of relocated to where it currently exists now. So we are looking at the number of parking spaces, we do want to meet the minimum requirement, and from day one on our parking lot design, we have reduced the number of parking spaces and had that internal discussion.
And they are planning on having meetings there?
Yeah, so-
Not like the school district, four meetings, but-
Right, right. So kind of leading into this, I don't like the detention basin on the front lawn, okay? And the only reason that I'm going with this is that there is a slope there, there are some mature trees there, there's going to be a lot of disturbance. I guess going back to the detention basin, I know that it's a maintenance thing to have that there. It does, it does address a lot of the runoff. With the 100-year storm plan, can a detention basin be executed on this property? In addition with, you know, the subgrade structures and maybe another holding area?
Well, this detention basin will be within the property itself.
No, no, I'm talking about the underground chambers you originally had in the first version. You had some underground storage chambers, right?
Yes, that was the first design, because we were trying to keep the disturbance to a minimum, right?
Correct, okay.
So being that the town requested the 100-year storm event, it was more efficient to put the practice in the front. And the other thing we looked at, and I understand your concerns, like having these things on the front, when you, we looked at the grade elevations, you've got like eight or nine feet of grade difference between Balltown Road and where this practice would be. So you won't see inside this basin. And the other reason why too is that we've added that landscaping in the front to really soften it, and the two existing trees that you're referring to won't be impacted by our grading here.
Yeah, they're to the north.
Yes.
And it's not an area where there should be pedestrian traffic.
I'm sorry?
It's not an area where there should be pedestrian traffic.
Correct, yeah. So we feel like with, you know, the revisions that we've made to the stormwater, keeping it as, you know, up the hill as far as possible, creating a stormwater feature, and it's actually part of like DEC practices to try to incorporate it into the landscape package of every building, and that's what we're trying to do is, is, you know, so that it doesn't stick out like a sore thumb, keep it up in that corner and landscape around it so that, you know, it'll be uniform across the front of that, you know, existing building and proposed building.
And a rain garden is not an option?
This is essentially a rain garden.
Okay.
Because, you know, we've, you know, we've got plantings on the top portion of it, not like within the basin, you know? I think what we're proposing here is less maintenance, you know, which is important for the school district. So yeah, you know, I understand your concern, but I think we're trying to do the best to meet everybody's needs.
So just to be clear, the main reason you had to go from the underground detention to this detention pond or basin was that 100-year storm calculation?
Yeah, one of the reasons, and it would just-
Was it one of the reasons, or the only reason, or the main, what was?
The main reason, yes, yeah.
Or some other reason?
Because of the increase, right, it would nearly double the size of that practice, which would increase the cost of, you know, what the tenant is doing here, you know, the school district, so it would be, you know, it would, this is the best way to do it from a cost perspective, you know, value engineering, if you will.
Okay. So it's really the increased cost with doing underground detention based on the 100-year storm?
Well, there's, there's a value that comes with that because there would be less disturbance on the front lawn. I'm just, I just don't think that this is going to be executed as well as you projected in that rendering. And having that not on the roadside, I mean, I just have a personal problem with a lot of, you know, not downstreaming things. Everybody gets pond, so you look at all these things, you have a detention thing here, here. So in this instance, where we're a little bit in a tighter fabric, having it on the backside and having that below grade, I don't think, maybe combined with a smaller area that's, you know, an above-surface detention area, if you could combine the two, I understand that there, you know, the subsurface structures have to be maintained, whether they're blown out or hydrovacued out, there is a maintenance component that comes with that, but the school district would have the ability to continually maintain that, or the property manager, whoever it is. So I just think that shifting that to the front, to me, doesn't aesthetically really solve the problem of what we're going to get for the whole package of the renovation and the addition. That's just my opinion.
Yeah.
I mean, I'd like to see, if it could be to the back or the side of the property, again, you know, we've got this long driveway that comes up, if there was temporary parking that might be justified just on the right-hand side, that could be used to utilize some of the parking spaces where you drop another couple, if they gain you some area on that, I mean, I, I didn't mind the subsurface structure. I thought it was a pretty good solution to a tight site.
Yeah, but when you look at the cost of that, and that cost would have been relayed to the school district, you know?
Yeah.
It was a big number. So what we did was, you know, we didn't just say, oh, let's just throw the stormwater practice in the front. We do have another practice in the back, right behind the addition. So we were trying to minimize the footprint of this practice on the front side, and we also have it on the back side where that takes the rooftop. So we are trying to fit this in a small, compact and keep the disturbance to that one acre as well, or less than one acre as well, so.
David, I, when I was thinking about this, I was, I kind of share some of your concerns. I see where you're coming from, this seemed like valuable real estate in Town Center Overlay District where basically you've got, you're kind of pigeonholing the potential of any future development closer to pedestrian access and the road. But practically speaking, what is the, is, are the setbacks larger on this? I've always assumed there's a larger right-of-way, given the location of the other neighbors. CBS 6 seems to be pretty much in line with this building's setback, and so I guess, I'm curious to know, David, what potential future development, what do you see as the value of the, because I, I can see what you mean, it'd be nice, you know, co-op is obviously very close to the, the right-of-way, and it's, it fosters more pedestrian activity. Stain could be said for Stewart's, the bank.
Right. I mean, in theory, a lot of the development that's on this side of Balltown Road just happens to have a large setback. All the buildings seemed at one point to start, and that's where they really weren't carried towards whatever the closest, the closest setback could be off of wherever the right-of-way was. You know, maybe there's another way to take that detention pond in the front and attenuate it a little bit, so maybe it's not as, you know, jelly bean shaped? I'm just wondering if, if you wanted to landscape along the front and created, maybe, maybe that's the solution. I just think that there's, there's a good slope there, it's concentrated in that front corner, I just question how it's going to look and, and just perform long-term.
You want a couple more landscaping items in front of that? We can certainly add landscaping features, you know, but, you know, you've got, this thing is sitting probably 60 feet back from, from the sidewalk, you know, and it's elevated, and you'll still have that, that lawn look in the front. and you'll still have that lawn look in the front.
I see what you're saying. It renders this area pretty much unusable, right? Whereas underground stormwater, it's dual-purpose. You've got your stormwater practice and then parking.
Right, yeah.
It's like adding a story. Has anyone ever incorporated a buyer retention into some kind of like a pocket park? Does people do that? I know I've seen like novel solutions for areas that are like a bike path, roadside, buyer retention, street kind of thing.
I think the closest thing that that comes to is between the entrance to the side of Shoprite Plaza and where the Stewart's is. You've got a swale down in there and there's, you know, right, some picking tables and stuff, but that would probably be the closest. I, I just, not that it sets a precedent, but we just don't see the front lawns of properties having detention basins on them. So, I know you can landscape around them and plant things, but eventually it just becomes an overflow.
There's plenty of front lawn left, looking at the CN neighborhood commercial requirements. The setback front is 15 feet and we're looking at about 110 feet here off the road. Seems like a lot of, a lot of green space, which is good, you know? You know, I don't know. Is there, is there any way to minimize it by changing the depth or the configuration of it to?
Well, I mean, right now I was trying to keep it as far away from Balltown Road as possible. The only other shape I could do is bring it closer to Balltown Road, because I can't go to the, would that be to the north, right?
Right, no, I know.
I can't go to the north because we're trying to save that mature tree and the further you go north, you're going to be under the roots of that tree.
Here's a question, just if, if the design were to change where it was 15, 20 feet off the right-of-way in the front symmetrically, do we alter that would be a better solution than up the hill and less visible?
No, I don't think so. I'm just saying that there's lots of lawn there and the requirements are 15-foot front-yard setback in this neighborhood commercial. And we're at 115 existing and 109.5 as proposed. I assume that's because the addition sticks out a little bit, is that? So, I mean, it's keeping it as tight as possible to the structure already, you know, it seems to me.
Yeah, my biggest concern is Dr. Pino's comment on performance. So, visually, I don't think it will be an impairment. It's so up, it's so far up the hill and I'm so short, I don't even see that. Luigi appreciates that comment.
That's right.
But, performance-wise, in real estate-wise, but in another, this is a tenant, right? So, the next use would have to address the desire to use that real estate more efficiently, right?
They'd have more, they'd have, if they wanted to expand their footprint further, they would have more stormwater to...
To contend with and they'd have to come up with something else, more than likely.
Yeah, absolutely. If there was something different than this, we would have to come back before this board anyways and look at that.
Yep.
Now, I know Luigi, you look at what's coming off the site now and you're trying to kind of maintain status quo. Do you have any sense of what the capacity of the inlet to the town sewer is, what you have to work with there?
Yeah, so, so we do our pre and post drainage analysis, so whatever is going to Balltown Road today, right, which has, you know, a rooftop and it has parking, we look at what the flow is currently. And then with the, we are increasing the impervious, right, with the rooftop addition and a few more parking spaces. That's why we size that practice up to the volume that we need to reduce the amount of flow, or actually reducing the amount of discharge rates, right? And again, when you go back to this Vuna's log, you know, 25 years typically the general practice for something this size. And we're going above and beyond that, giving the town 100 here, you know? So, we thought we were doing something better, right? And, you know, I guess it's okay for me to say it tonight, but if you're going to require an underground detention, then I think this project is dead because of that cost. That cost will be, will have to transfer to the tenants, to the school district, and that wasn't, you know, part of that agreement. So, I guess we would need to know if this board can move forward with some sort of stormwater in the front. And, you know, we can certainly landscape it. And then as far as maintenance goes, we can put together a maintenance agreement like we do for all these other private stormwater practices, you know, and, you know, and ensure that. But the tenant, you need to know that the tenant going in here is a long-term lease. So, it's not like, you know, you've got a guy in there or a tenant in there for year one or year two, and then, you know, that maintenance procedure is going to change regularly. It's a long-term lease, so they'll get familiar with how to maintain that. And the practice that we're proposing is grass. So, if it's not raining and they go mow the lawn, they'll be able to mow right through that basin.
So, I'm actually, I was hoping to talk before you did, but that's okay. So, I was going to basically say, I'm just disappointed that the drainage structures isn't an option, but this isn't a deal breaker. However, again, if you propose a project that has elements to it, and that's something that we're looking at and considering, and that was over the budget, that's poor planning. So, again, if that was something that wasn't vetted out well financially with the tenant or with the developer, then, you know, showing that and then retracting it just because of a financial, you know, restraint all of a sudden, maybe that wasn't vetted out better, but that's just my opinion. So, looking, looking at it from a...
It's not what happened.
It's not what happened?
No, I'm sorry. That's actually not what happened. What happened is Luigi designed the stormwater system underneath the parking lot for a 25-year event.
Okay.
Then they, we were asked to design it to 100-year, and when you design it to 100-year, you're taking that stormwater system that's underneath the parking lot and almost quadrupling the size of it or tripling the size of it. That's the impact. So, that we're designing to 100-year, they couldn't afford to be able to put that underneath that. You're probably talking $600,000, $700,000 for that type of a system. So...
My question though, and I appreciate that you guys are trying to leave it better than you found it, so to speak, but my question is, okay, maybe the 100-year storm is more likely, but can the existing town infrastructure actually handle that?
Yes.
What is the capacity of the manholes and the catch basements, catchment basins on Balltown Road? Because I don't know that. Maybe we don't have capacity constraints on Balltown.
And you're going back to my point that I want the TDE's input on whether this is going to cause a drainage issue down to Balltown Road. And if the response is, no, it really doesn't, this is adequate, I don't mind saving the taxpayers a few dollars, because ultimately, it's going to be the taxpayers paying for this. That's where the school district gets its money.
Maybe 25-year storm is good enough, is what we're saying.
Well, but we have been looking more and more to design things for the 100-year storms because gee, we're getting them.
But, but we're asking, but we, let's draw a distinction between designing private practices for 100-year storm and just happening to already have public infrastructures that can handle the 100-year storm. If our public infrastructure can already handle the 100-year storm, why put that burden on the school district?
I don't know the answer to whether the public infrastructure will take the additional drainage that will result from this project.
That's a question I think worth answering.
And that's why I want the TDE's input. Real simple there.
So, there is the potential, there is the potential that if the engineering comes back and the current infrastructure could support that, there would be the possibility of either eliminating the detention basin on the front lawn or minimizing it? Is that, is that a potential?
Yeah, we could certainly minimize the footprint of that stormwater in the front. But the way I looked at it was, there's, there's a six-inch pipe that's exiting now currently.
Are you kidding?
Should I keep going?
Yeah.
So, there are currently catch basements on site that discharge to Balltown Road, right, with a six-inch pipe. And I, I'm not coming in with my proposal, I'm trying to make it a 12-inch pipe, making it bigger and releasing more water. Like, I'm restrained to a six-inch pipe. And that, when I do my analysis, because I'm increasing, that's why I have this detention basin, right? And that's being regulated by the same six-inch pipe. So, I'm not increasing the discharge rate as the free, right? So, you know, when we look at that analysis, that's, that's what we're, we're looking at, yeah.
Yeah, and for me, you know, it's important, you know, to hear what the town designated engineer has to say also, the thing that's also interesting, the other thing that's interesting is the, you know, we do have quite the site there, there's a lot of green space, a lot, you know, huge setbacks, so there's opportunity there too that isn't typical. If that wasn't there and it was within the, you know, say 20-foot setback, 15 being the minimum, well, then the underground storage would be a necessity. In this case, we've got flexibility. So, let's hear what the, for me, I want to hear what the town designated engineer has to say. And I mean, that's your job is, you know, to minimize what can go or the rate that it goes so that we can handle it, because there might be other development along Balltown Road in the future. So, I mean, the least, you know, surge that we have, the better it is in the long run, right? So, yep.
And then my only other comment is, I noticed there was some signage attached to the drawings now, and I don't know if the planning department's had a chance to analyze that.
Yeah, we didn't provide the specific details for sizes. We just wanted to show you on a rendering where it would be, I don't know if Laura can pull up the rendering here.
But that, of course, would be subject to town approval as well.
Absolutely.
Meanwhile, unless you have Mr. Pleschek, unless you think, anything else from the board? I mean, since, since we can do our determination in the final approval and we don't need a public hearing, I think the next thing is just to continue to get the feedback from the town designated engineer, make sure there's no significant items, if there's no significant items, hopefully we'll have that by January 8th. And if that's the case, I don't see why we can't call for a resolution on the 8th if there's no concern. So, I guess I'd leave it to you to make sure you respond to the TDE and Laura and the planning office, make sure to get that out in a timely manner and if there's no, you know, and there's some concerns, but, you know, hearing back from the TDE is number one, I guess.
And if you wind up having a meeting with the TDE, feel free to involve me. I'd be happy to attend.
Sure.
I mean, we had that long discussion, but just foreshadowing ahead, right? I don't think we're going to see an alternative to this plan.
Pardon?
I don't think we're going to see an alternative to the plan as proposed, right? Because the cost of the other one is a pretty good cost.
That's an eye-opener, yeah.
Well, but it could be reduced if you find that the engineering evaluation comes back and you don't need to have such a large detention basin, right? I mean, if you, there's information we need to see. So, if there is, the only request I would have is that if there is a way to soften that, that would probably be, I think, beneficial all around.
Can't argue with that. At least I can. Does that sound good, everybody?
Yeah.
So, we're getting there.
Okay.
All right?
Appreciate it.
And we'll see on January 8th and hopefully we have all the information and we can call for a resolution, which would be the meeting after that, whatever the date is, probably the 20th or so of January, okay?
All right, great. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Everybody have a happy holiday.
Yes, I appreciate that, thank you. All right, and that brings us to a new project under discussion items, that's 2333 Knott Street East, that's a site plan application for tenant change, that's the Shoprite Market 32. Do we have a representative online?
Yes, I'm Kelly.
Hi.
Sorry, I'm having a very hard time with my mic.
Yeah, you're breaking up a little bit near the end there. But if you can hear me, I guess I'd like to, if you want to give us an overview, it's the first time the board has seen this, so if you want to brief us on it, that would be great. We know it's basically a tenant change, grocery store to grocery store. So, I think that, you know, from my point of view, things that we would need to focus on is it's in the Town Center Overly District and, you know, the color schemes are probably the most important and signage for us, at least I would think so.
Kelly? Yes? You're very short. You can get it out. I'm sorry, what did you say? Maybe not. Well, I think you guys can see in the background, like, the inside is not changing a lot.
Yeah.
It is a rendering.
Yep.
And I have on the screen, which does change the facade on the front. Well, I don't think like grocery store, grocery store impacts that a lot, pretty easy. I guess maybe just for discussion, if you guys look at that and if you have any questions about, there's some tiny changes on it, like, the exterior elevations are proposed at this time, they are not approved by a senior management, nor like a firm landlord. I sense just the preliminary exterior elevations for the board package. This was our typical market that we should be designing with platform.
Okay. Yeah, actually, if we just zoom out a bit, I do have one question that wasn't there to me in the write-up. Is Market 32 taking responsibility as the prime in the entire plaza? So, is it going to be the Market 32 Plaza?
We're just talking about the store itself, they're leasing the...
No, no, yeah, so that part's understood, but, so I guess the question is, what will be the name of this plaza?
Did you ask what the name of the plaza would be?
Yeah, the plaza that's currently called Shoprite Plaza, what's it going to be?
Right, I believe that we're proposing Market 32 Plaza, but that has not been approved by senior management, nor has it been presented to the landlord for approval of that.
Okay, thank you. Is that a clear answer to the question? Thank you.
All right, well, go ahead, Mr. Pleschek.
We will submit our signage package to the board and get signage approval, signage governance.
The, there actually does appear to be some significant change to the front of the building. You are changing the entryway near the produce section, and I think it's an improvement personally. It allows for better flow near the cash registers. Right now, when you're checking out Shoprite, you can only exit through one door, whereas now there's a second point of egress. So, I like that. But it does change...
We're hoping that we can get that done.
Yeah, that, that door now, it empties directly onto a sidewalk, so we will have to look at striping and pedestrian safety in that, that's a busy little area there with bus stop.
Could you back up a second? There were currently two entrances, so what's the change? The configuration's a little different, but there are two ways in and out now.
There's only one way out if you are paying for your goods.
No, you can hang on left and walk down, it's a longer, it's a longer walk, but you can walk that way if you want to.
I've never, I've never been able to do it.
Oh, I see, I see what you're saying. You're saying from the inside to get to the hall.
Yeah, you gotta...
There's a bar, there's a fence there.
Okay, right, yeah, you can walk past the shopping carts, you're right.
Yeah. Anyway, this is, I mean, overall, this looks right, but I think, Laura, weren't there some other notes about upgrades then? That's why I asked the question, upgrades to the plaza itself, not just the, not just the replacement of the tenant for the supermarket?
Like the dead vegetation?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're looking for age-crossed lots and, and, refresh landscaping and, there's a sidewalk that's... I'm sorry, what was that last one I did last? Um, there's a piece of sidewalks that's in, on the east side of the Shoprite Plaza. It was never built, although it was originally a place for... We're looking for crosswalks on, on that group. And we're just landscaping and discussing sidewalks. I'm sorry, what was that last one I did with? Um, there's a piece of sidewalks fitting on the east side of the Shoprite Plaza. It was never built when those originally planned for. That may be the only a little three month, only a month or way to falls, but we'll certainly address it.
Yeah, it's, we're having, it's tough to hear you guys, so I appreciate everything's happening tonight. The colors, I mean, this is a proposal, it's preliminary, as you stated, you know, you need to get a management buy-in yet, so this is really preliminary, a typical Market 32. So, so this is subject to change. It sounds like, again, we're just kicking it off tonight. So we understand that. As far as the color schemes go, I mean, I believe it complies with the Town Center Overlay District because it's mostly gray and I believe that's considered acceptable. It's not like a neon. I mean, the green stands out a little bit, but it doesn't look like there's lots of green there. So it appears to comply with the requirements of the Town Center Overlay District from what I've read.
It's not yellow and red.
Yeah, it's not, yeah, it's not primary colors, yep.
And it's consistent with what they have at the Balltown one.
Well, that's not the Town Center.
And various other places.
That's not, yeah.
It's sort of their branding, really.
Yeah, well, we still need to comply with the Town Center or at least note it. So it turns out it's reasonable for the Town Center Overlay District, so it's okay. All right, so I guess, because it's really difficult tonight with the communication. So what I would suggest is that, you know, you get buy-in from the management, you update the, the plan if it requires it, get together with the planning office because they have some input from, from some of the other boards and some comments regarding crosswalks and maintenance of the property, which we have asked other applicants to talk to, talk to the landlord about in the past. So we'll see if we can address some of those also as part of this package. And I would also like to have a, somebody volunteer as a project lead from the planning board on this also, somebody be willing to do that, to get through this. All right? And if it's not tonight, just, you can send me an email and let me know. We can inform the planning office. Does that sound reasonable for tonight, everybody?
Yep.
Applicant, you okay there?
Chair on.
Yep. You okay? Oh, what's that, you're going to do it? Okay, so Ms. Gold will be the project lead. Thank you, Ms. Gold.
Somebody wants, else wants into, that's why, yeah.
So there's some comments that, like I said, I believe they're in the package from the different boards and from the planning office about things we'd like to see. So we just have to at least go through that list and address those and, and see what we can, what's reasonable and so on and so forth, okay? Does that sound good? It's O'Neil, is that what it is, Ms. O'Neil? Yeah, we're having trouble tonight, so. All right, this is on the off, you can hear me, we're gonna, we're gonna.
Um, I think it's just like holiday.
Oh, no problem. We understand, we're having difficulties tonight. So, yeah, get a, you know, get some buy-in from, like I said, management. We got a project lead to sign, we got some open items. This was preliminary information, so we'll get you on the agenda for the January 8th meeting and we'll hopefully be able to turn this around rather quickly since it is a change of tenant, as long as we can get the, some action on the open items that we'd like to have addressed, okay?
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Any comments for anybody on that?
No, I mean, I think this is.
Okay, good. I know it's a difficult night tonight with the communications, all right? All right, so that's under for discussion items tonight. I don't know, Laura, you're hard to hear tonight, so I don't know if anybody has anything special under reports or commission that we must talk about. I do know we have the, the calendar that we should act on. That was emailed to everybody, the calendar, seems reasonable. And I know that if there is any problems with it, there's no reason why we can't modify it throughout the year. Do everybody have an opportunity to take a look at the calendar?
I didn't see any conflicts.
Yeah, it looks good to me.
Generally speaking, I, I feel as though it's good to have two a month. I'm wondering why we can't accomplish that in March, June, March, May and June. May, I understand with Memorial Day. But June and March, we've got, I'm trying to follow my color coding here and I, there's some dates grayed out, but I don't understand.
Yeah, I can blur out.
I understand June because of graduations and such.
Well, I think it was because of special.
I think early voting.
Early voting, there was elections.
There's three early voting.
Okay.
And when, and we can't have a board in, the room is sealed for which.
Yeah, it's a difficult year, 2024 for voting.
Okay.
So, but what I, I did talk to Laura about it. So, you know, if we get in a situation where we have to have action take place and if we have to call for a special meeting and we can squeeze one in, you know, we'll do whatever it takes. I think we, I think we're okay with the calendar and then, you know, we can be flexible, reduce or add meetings if something comes up. We've done that in the past, right? Okay, let's just do a show hands. All those in favor of approval of the calendar for 2024 for the planning board signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay, we've got to find a way to meet.
Okay, we have, all right, we got one, we got one.
Find another room or something.
No, on the, on the calendar, all right? It's all right. That's what's, what's all about.
Business has to get done.
Yep, and if we, if we need to do something, we can see about scheduling something to squeeze it in, okay? All right, so that's it for, that I have on the agenda for tonight. Does anybody have anything else that we can try to discuss? Laura, anything? Clark? Elena?
No.
No? All right, all right, so it was a difficult night. I appreciate everybody's patience. Thank you very much. I'd like to say, have a happy holidays and happy new year and look forward to seeing everybody beginning of the year. Have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Gold and looks like a second by Mr. Khan. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye. Same here for Josh, thank you very much.
No, thank you, everyone.
The year in the books.
Yep.